Mr. Robert, pledge allegiance to the Constitution. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the right to do justice for all. Before saying goodbye to CTS Coaster, just for a moment, I'll remember today's 22nd anniversary on the attack on the World Trade Center. And you folks weren't born yet, but boy, I bet all the rest of us remember where we were. So, hold your silence, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, third round of business is just the other forum. Do we have a forum? Fourth item of business, approve of the agenda, change in sequence, or removal of items.
None.
Okay, let's move on then to item number five, which is announcements and the introduction of our student representatives.
We have two new birthdays this year. So, since I left, we have two Kate and Fox, two high school seniors. Obviously, they're just an item from the minute I met them as sophomores. They were chosen by the student body last year. They've prepared themselves for a while. The survey that we noticed, the student council members that sat on the board and were doing during the school year, not in summer, and do the part of the agenda that affects them, they're often people that these two gentlemen are. So, their expectations for here should pre- create the same presentation that last year, and also to look into any issues with the students that you get one or two, like for instance, there's a fashion food program that's out, which is, you know. But I'll let them say a few words of themselves because when you put file, we are.
So, on Kate and Fox, as you said, he gave me a bit of a holy recommendation there. I gave it too much. I'm active in student council, was president last year. This year, we're focusing on this and look forward to meeting you on work with you in the not-so-distant country.
My name's Brad, Dave, obviously. I like to play sports, I guess. I am a three-sport athlete. I am active in NHS student council. I was president freshman year, which I guess really doesn't count because that was most of COVID. I was president, so. But yeah, I look forward to getting to know you guys over the school year. Obviously, I'm always busy, but I'm always ready to take on new challenges.
Board members have any questions for our students? Students, do you have any questions for us? Okay, thank you. We look forward. We look forward to working with you. Welcome.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we have to back up to remember before I'm still learning. There is no changes to the agenda, so we need a motion to approve it.
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll stand there.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda on favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you, Jeff. Okay, moving on to number six, celebrations.
Oh, we have two more. I'm sorry, I have two other quick announcements.
Oh.
Yeah. This Friday, the 15th, is the third Friday count that I'm sure most of you are aware of. It will impact our enrollment count. You do get to count the day before and day after, so it's not quite like some folks think that if the students are there, you cannot count them. But we do encourage all of our families to make sure that the kids are in attendance on Friday. And then, we will need to, the board will have to look at your calendars coming up to the October meeting, because during the October meeting, we're going to have to set a date for the annual meeting before the end of October. So, start looking at possible dates towards the end of October, but we will discuss that in the October meeting. And the board will have to set a date at that meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it. Good deal. Now, we're on to number six, celebrations.
So, I have a slideshow for celebrations, but we have one other celebration. So, when you have a child who has a birthday on the day of a board meeting, you get to acknowledge said child and wish them happy birthday, because technically, it's going to be on YouTube after this, so.
I'm sure she's watching.
But it's recorded, Dr. Watson, they're on the website, so you can show her later. So, Dr. Watson?
Charlotte, happy birthday, go to bed.
Happy birthday to Charlotte. So, our celebration this month would be welcoming our students back. So, I apologize, there's five slides, but what I did is this. Anybody who took the time to upload a back-to-school photo to our Facebook page, I thought deserved the public rec here. So, every one of them is on here. Deb fixed all of mine. I don't have an artistic eye. I tried to like arrange them in like a collage. They should have like a Google app that does it for you. But Deb had to fix it. We can go through here. There were some, we even have some adults, some adult staff whose spouses took back-to-school photos of them. Let's see if you can pick them up in here. Okay. Our other celebration would be, we have a PHS student, Kaylee Gosney, was selected to participate in the Jerry Ensemble. Very prestigious award, only a limited number of students you can see on the list that are selected, and she will be performing. Dr. Watson, do we know the date on that yet? I apologize if I missed that, but we'll communicate that.
I don't know anything about this one. This one was just announced.
Okay.
I do know that her show in Wausau ran out of weekend.
Okay.
And it went very well. They built the house every time. She's exhausted right now. Yeah, so she's, she's just remarkable.
I will, I will get the, a date so we can advertise that when she's participating, but this is a great honor for Kaylee.
She's a sophomore.
Sophomore. Okay, those are our celebrations.
And your, um, moving on to number seven, district administrator updates.
Okay, we can get right into that. So, Homecoming 2023, so my Friday Family Communication entailed the tentative plans for Homecoming, which is Friday, September 29th, with a day of activities to incorporate all of our students, staff, and get our community more involved in the Homecoming process. So, this is a tentative plan, kind of the morning for prep, final decorations, working on the floats. And then, at approximately 9:45, we're going to have the PCCC. Through fifth grade students, we'll do a little mini parade around the campus for the old, the sixth through 12th grade students will line the streets on campus. They'll do a little parade with some banners and other little activities planned by their teachers. The high school is going to do their normal pep assembly, but then, in the afternoon, we are going to do a full pep assembly. Mrs. Anderson is coordinating that graciously, has volunteered to help coordinate run that full school assembly. So, we'll have all students and all staff of the district will be in the varsity gym for that pep assembly. And then, after that, all students will walk down downtown, and we will be doing a full parade starting at about 2:00 or 2:15 PM. As I indicated, the email, the importance of doing a parade during the school day was so that all of our students could attend. Some communities do it after school, but that prohibits students who ride the bus. Are you understood? We felt that was really important, and it's close enough that at a timeframe, we gave three weeks' notice that we're hoping that folks who want to be able to take off work early will be able to attend. And we are going to livestream the mini parade, the full pep assembly, and the regular Homecoming parade. So, it's not the same as being there, but we have several staff who have stepped up to volunteer to help coordinate this organization, but we're pretty excited about kind of giving the full day touch to Homecoming. I didn't show that in there because I love the logo, so I put it everywhere I can. So, fall sports update. So, all of our fall athletic teams are doing wonderfully at this point right now in the, in their respective seasons. The cross-country team has been, the thing I liked about Coach Pio, I think Alyssa and we've talked about this, is he's so positive about everything. His comments that he shared, I guess, were some comments where the kids are doing a phenomenal job. He, I experienced it firsthand from having the daughters on the middle school cross-country team. And he makes kids feel like they're the top athlete in the world, which is important. But our cross-country team is doing really well at this point. We have a couple runners that are excelling. Of course, last year, Derek qualified for state, doing really well. Ezra's another athlete that he commented is doing quite well. So, Friday night, Alyssa, I'm going to ask you to kind of talk about it. I read about it a little bit, about this Friday night meeting is something spectacular, right? The night run?
I am. So, this is the second year Cincel has participated in the Nightfall Classic Race held at River Edge. So, it's my understanding that this started quite a long time ago with a gentleman who was raising funds for a scholarship, and he was diagnosed with cancer. So, then it turned into raising funds for him. Now, it's turned into a huge cancer benefit to go towards research. So, Friday night, our runners will be running. It's all pitch black. The course is lit up. A lot of the runners put on glow sticks while they're running or put things in their tall socks. And each team can dress up, and obviously, it's competitive, but it's also for a really good cause. So, if spectators want to join though, there is limited parking. You have to buy tickets ahead of time, and they will probably sell out before Thursday. So.
Thank you. Some photos from cross-country. So, some notes I found about cross-country, it's really difficult to get photos. Unless you're willing to run, which I understand is illegal to run with the headways. And we're getting maybe disqualified, so we set people up strategically to get photos here. The junior high girls team won the meet, they're down there with their plaque from San Diego. Colby? So, our Panther football team with a convincing win against Fattelli on Friday night is currently sitting at 4-0. I asked Coach Dewar to comment on something impressive, because I asked, because I knew, I said, "What's your point differential so far this year?" Of course, he said, he knew it off the top of his head. And I went, "If I had that convincing of a point differential, I'd have it memorized as well." But I'll tell you what, the boys are playing really well right now. Great combination of the offense, the defense. I mean, it's been fun to watch. I've been to three of the four games, and they're getting better every game out here. So, exciting to watch. And they truly are, it's like a team effort. Like, I don't know who you would, I know Dawson, you take Dawson away, but then you have Dawson. We just got a lot of skilled players and a lot of people that do a lot of damage out there. And the defense is the key the whole time, because everybody can score a lot of points, but if you can't stop teams from scoring. It's been, it's been impressive to watch. Kudos to the kids and the coaches. Some pictures of our PHS dance team, who performed at halftime, did a phenomenal job with their performance. And our Panther volleyball team also off to a great start. They're 11-2 overall, 1-0 in conference. They lost a tough match last weekend in the question against Stratford, who was ranked in state. They lost a five-set match to Stratford. They, they won first, or took first place in the Elswell Tournament and beat Elswell for the first time in five years. The common theme with that too is their defense is really good. If you've been to matches to watch, they have a really good defense, and they pass well. Very athletic. I love the theme night. Had to get a picture of that in there.
Yep.
Okay, so, I wanted to put in a, an update about our board retreats so that we can have a discussion tonight. On September 25th, we're going to be meeting for our board retreat. We, we listed some ideas. We've discussed this in the past, what potential topics that we can go through that night. We don't need to necessarily like fine-tune this today to be aware. We'll share a document. These are just some ideas about some things that we've talked about in the past. And then, down below, talking about some things that we may want to do over the next nine to 12 months for ongoing professional development or opportunities. School finance, charter schools, you know, emerging issues in public. There's a lot of things that this board has expressed an interest in, really getting to know the details and how effective boards operate, so.
Yeah, I would see this as kind of a menu of things. We've only got two and a half, two hours, two and a half hours.
Two and a half hours.
We can't do everything, but I would appreciate any feedback that folks have. And I know Jason and the two are working together on this, so. Yeah.
And I shared with the board, I shared with all of you, the Fran Finkels' presentation from our board development last August. I would say, I think that first one is on the roles of the board and the district administrator, just as a refresher going in, because I know that's one of our, you know, topics that's likely to come up. But we can kind of pick, as Fran said, we don't have time to do it all, but we can certainly pick some things that we feel to be the biggest bang for our block early in the school year. Okay? So, I wanted to give the board a few updates on some items, facilities, tech items. So, the PCCC upgrades, the door was actually cut in today, and the door is scheduled to arrive by September 28th. An update with that is, is that the county has a significant amount of funding that has become available for enhancing or increasing childcare access in the county. It was originally slated to go towards a large project that fell through. So, J. Cana indicated that they want that money to go towards some of the smaller communities who have childcare, which we fit the bill for that. So, we are on the next agenda for the county's meeting to discuss allocation of funds. We, we actually did give a list of a few other upgrades within the spaces that we put on a list that, that we would like to consider during those conversations. And Tabitha and I will likely attend the meeting to answer the questions that we have. So, softball batting cage installation. This was set last spring and built into the budget. The softball batting cage did not have a concrete surface. It had like a gravel uneven surface. The cage was in need of repair. The decision was made to order a new cage and then to pour a new slab out to, towards the football field on the left-field side. That's actually going to happen here in the next month before winter. The slab will be poured, and then the cage will be installed in the spring. If we don't get the slab poured now, we wouldn't get it in at time for softball season next year. So, that's, that is taking place here shortly, within the next month. Football field irrigation system. We're currently waiting on the supplies and equipment right now. Once those materials arrive, it's a matter of three days for installation. They've indicated that that will likely occur by the end of the month. And I know there may be the thought, well, at this point, is there, is there a point to get in? Yes, absolutely, because once we get some constant irrigation on the field, it's going to strengthen the root system for the future. It's, it'll, it'll be a good thing to get it in and get it installed. And it's very, the, the process does not disturb any of the field or the track. It's all done under, and they leave the place like they weren't even there three days later, so. Parking update. I'm going to let Heather talk about that a little bit. It's kind of exciting here that we, we've, we may have a solution. Well, I think we do have a solution to our parking woes here. So, Heather, do you want to talk about the process?
Sure. As we were meeting with teams throughout August in-service, we agreed that we wanted to try recess before lunch. And so, during COVID, our recess times were standard dialed like 5, 10 minutes for every grade level. This year, we just didn't have the staffing to supervise recess in that manner. So, Jen Peterson came up with a great idea, and she said, "Well, why don't we have our recess times back to where, you know, we take 4K through second grade out at the same time, 3, 5, and then 6, 8?" So, then that led to realizing that, we've had many conversations about the junior high kids playing on the, the main playground, because there's not a lot for them to do. Now, there's no overlap in recess time, so then the older kids can come out and use that space. There's still foursquare, there's the basketball, all of that. And so, that led to realizing that the area by the softball fields is only used in the mornings. So, then we changed our morning routine. Instead of the kids coming in that area and playing in the grass and field, they walk down the sidewalk, and then the fourth, fifth graders will on the playground. And then, 6 through 8 just kind of stay at the back of the building, so that frees up an entire area. So, during one of our meetings, we did sort of like, "Oh, my gosh, we could now have parking up there." So, just things fell into place, and I think it's a great idea. So, I worked a lot with Dan about the logistics of, you know, what happens in winter and all that. So, it just worked out, so. So, yeah, now there's a lot of spaces in that, not for high school kids.
So, that'll be key, 4K staff parking in PCCC. They're still able to use that north row in the small lot, if necessary, but that frees up more visitor spots in that lot, which is something that's always been brought up. And then, we're screwed parking, so we won't have to use the church parking lot necessarily, unless we have a lot of spring student drivers that get their licenses. So, good, good solution, low cost, other than a little extra stone removal, so. Okay, thank you. I wanted to give you, this is kind of a color-coded update. I presented this for three meetings now. This was originally all gray because we hadn't done any of it. So, the items in green have now been completed by the district. And we're at, the yellow would be, we're in the process of working on these things. And the two at the bottom, the, the plan is right now, wouldn't be firm this up to the point where, if you remember, I had told the board, I wasn't sure when we would be bringing our building goals. We will be bringing those at the next October board meeting, the building level goals and the grade level goals for the lower level will be presented to the school board at the next, in the October meeting. And then, of course, the bigger update will still take place with the. So, I'm going to let Matt, Heather, and Rod kind of just talk about the process, like this process, give a little bit of an overview from your, each of your lenses here about the process and where we're at right now, if you wouldn't mind.
Jeff, is there mine? No, that's fine. I would say, from my point of view, this is something that Mr. Nadia talked about a little bit. Special education, when we look at numbers frequently, qualification, reevaluations, those types of things. So, when we started looking at some of our forward exam scores that Dr. Watson brought to our attention this spring, there were some things that, you know, stood out to us that we definitely need to focus on. So, then over the course of the summer, we had talked about how we, as a group, really pulling in on making sure that some of those landing skills our kids have are being addressed. So, Mr. Nad reached out to, I think Jeremiah Cisa, who find out who will be available to come at the end of July, a group of Mrs. Friday's staff members. Mr. Nad, myself, met with Chris Betcher from Cisa, and she kind of walked us through some wise dash information. That kind of opened it up to, you know, what do we then do with all that information as a stack? Do we have them dive into it headfirst and just start looking at it themselves? Do we try and provide them maybe more of a footnotes, footnotes versions where they don't have to necessarily try and navigate through everything on Wise Dash, because it can be a little bit cumbersome? So, we came up with some folders and some different things. Mrs. Nad, Mrs. Schooling, Mrs. Friday, myself, we looked at things from more of a grade level perspective and how we could provide that information to our staff members in a more concise manner. And prior to them coming back in August, we looked at Forward, AIMS Web, and kind of put all that information to some spreadsheets so they could easily look at all the scores and find those areas that need. And then, obviously, with our PLC information, they can now dive a little bit deeper into what those landing skills are. And then, as a grade level team or a content area team, find assessments that are common to those skills, and then, you know, look at ways to address them.
And I would, I would reiterate that that work of preparing that data that that group did was really well received by the rest of the staff. It allowed them to kind of dig in once they got back in August, so. Heather?
Yeah, I think the one part I can add would be with our goal discussion, the AGR group met this year for the first time really, because teachers always did their own goals for AGR. And this year, we got together and we really had some good conversation about how do we know our children are growing in literacy as the year goes on? And we decided, you know, what needs to happen in kindergarten, and then first, and second, and third. And so, the, the goals are more aligned to actually measuring different areas of literacy growth. So, I think that was a really powerful conversation to goal-setting.
From my perspective, I did a lot of my data work as the principal in June, because I was going to be gone in July. And so, when you get ahead of it a little bit, and while doing that, I started to get alarmed because of the data showing up. You don't want to overreact or underreact to data, because it's one day in a kid's life. But it was confirmed by other data we have. So, in high school, for instance, in the spring, they take a big test. It'd be the Forward or the Free ACP or the ACP, but throughout the year, we did this bizarre test, 20-minute test, and both showed some things that I was concerned about. And we know that our ACP scores are good. They're about the same as the schools around us and better. And so, we didn't have any alarm in there, but there's something happening with reading scores, for instance, it's what I'll show you in October. But there's data that concerned me that I wanted to bring forward, and I shared with the team that was working in the summer, and kind of focused on that with our team, the high school team that got back. But I wanted to wait for the strategic plan, because any goals that we set should be nested under what the district vision is for our school district. So, I waited for that to come out. And then, we had a, we went over the strategic plan as a staff, and then we went through the data piece by piece, what a master looks like, science scores, reiterating the fact that science scores don't belong to science teachers or science students, because they're all our kids. That's the same for all of it. And so, we went through the, the whole thing, right? Every piece of data we could, trying to predict the, what trends were in there, what do we need to know, what is the style for our students, and what we need to do. Then, we set a goal, actually, we set two goals that I'll share with you next month. The staff did the goal setting. It was far different than what I had envisioned it was going to be, but they got there and they meant the most. And just to give you a bit of a spoiler, it's not a composite goal this year. Last year, we said we were 21 in ACP, but it does not look like that this year. So, the staff focus, I think inspired by the goal of, within the, the student success pillar of the strategic plan, but also just what we're ready for based on our PLC process. And so, in that process, we're looking at, how do we know which of the kids learn material? And so, I think that piece of it, what we're ready for, led us to a more robust and focused goal than we had for last year, which I'll share with you next month. And there's, that's not all we got. It's just student success. We also do have a culture, a culture, we have to talk based on this on that side. I want to.
Thank you. All, all buildings will have a SEL goal related to that connectedness for students, to make sure that they have a peer that they feel connected with or an adult, because, you know, we know that how essential that is for our students, so they'll have data on that as well. So, not only the academic goals, but those. And then, I know it was touched on by all of them about the progress monitoring and the assessments. The importance of that is, if you're not assessing as you go along, you don't know if you're not going in the right direction. You can change course if you need to reteach. You know, we, we can focus on those things so that we don't get to the point where we're just waiting for that yearly data with our Forward exam, because we need to know during the, during the cruise, we need to know where we're heading. And I, I'm excited, I, the staff did a phenomenal job. I would share that during, during one of the 4K8 meetings, a question I had posed to the staff, because it can be a daunting process a little bit. As I said, if we were to stop the data work today, right now, which we were not going to, how many of you have picked up something you're going to change in your instructional practices the first day of school? Or are you going to change what you, in every event of the room now? And I said, "Well, then we want the day already." If you're, if you're doing that, if you're already looking at this data saying, "This is going to impact what I'm going to do in my classroom," it's a win. So, anyway, this is, this is good work. The staff has put in a lot of time with this. I'm excited how the PLCs are going to allow us to continue, to collaborate and meet, because that's important, because we got a lot of work done during those days, those purposeful days, but we didn't even have enough time to get the work done that we needed to. So, the PLC time is essential for the groups to be able to get together and talk about this data, so. I know, any coalition members who want to talk about, I know there's two of you here, you want to talk, just briefly from your perspective, from the staff, just about the data and just kind of the process, only good things.
These two things have gone really hand in hand. Knowing what that data is, looking for those strengths in those places where we might be a little bit more weak, has allowed us to then go back and look at the standards that we worked on last year. And that document itself is going to be ever-evolving. But looking at those then, and it lets us know which ones we've been doing a really good job on, and which ones maybe we need to do some more on. And that's where this year's work is going to come in, where we're looking at those assessments. We're looking at the ones that we currently have, and then maybe seeing where we need to add, or making sure that all of those standards that we said that we were going to be assessing are actually assessed in some of the stuff that we're doing. So, using that data that came from the initial work is really helping us to inform as we're going through. So using that data that came from, um, the initial work is really helping us to inform as we're going through and creating and revamping the assessments this year to make sure that we're hitting not only the areas um, that we've said we are, but also those areas where we've shown to be a little bit weak.
So this assessment wasn't busy this way ever before?
Um, well, we've always done assessments, but not everybody is always making sure that, because you know, you know, you've got in your mind what you are doing, what you're teaching. Um, and you know that these are the topics, but we haven't always made sure that, you know, standard one V, this is the one that we said we're going, how many times have we assessed that? Is it, you know, ideally we want to do it several times. So we're, we're looking through now to see how many times have we really hit that one? Um, did we do maybe pre-assessments so we can see where the, the baseline is? And then periodic, um, reassessments to see if there's been broken agreements.
Cause that's the best, and that's a great question, Chris. The best in terms of we have these essential standards, but are we assessing those things that we need to have demonstration of students, uh, learning? So it's more focused.
Do you feel that the PLC time has allowed this to happen? This is obviously when these conversations are happening.
Absolutely. So with those assessments, we're able to, they're, it's timely data. You know, a lot of times we never had that common time where we could meet together and look at this and say, wow, 20% of our kids have, haven't mastered this skill. But guess what? We've got to move on to the next one. So now that we have this time, we can really discuss it and be able to be timely. So before that unit and that unit assessment is done, we're reteaching, we're changing our assessments to be able to make sure those kids are at that proficient or mastered level. I'm super excited for the end of the year of what everything's going to turn out.
Thank you. That is it for the district administrator. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Uh, let's move on to item number eight, the consent agenda items. A, meeting notice certification. B, the minutes of the August 14th regular meeting and close session meeting. Financial scores, um, reservations, retirements, hirings. And I would like to request that within the consent agenda, we pull item E five. This would be the hiring and vote on it as a separate item. This would be, um, voting, uh, I'm sorry, that item deals with, um, two south, junior high softball coach. Hiring.
I'll make the motion to move through the consent agenda items with, um, removing E five.
Is there a second?
One second. May I, can I jump in?
Jump in.
We got, we got word back, I, I think we're referring because of the potential, uh, relationship piece. We were informed by, uh, legal counsel, there would not be a conflict of interest. May I accurate on the hiring? Yes.
Um, I did research that one. No.
Oh, I thought that.
I researched a different one.
Okay.
But it would be on the safe side.
Yeah, that makes sense though. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So it's been moved and accepted to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of E, item E five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I will entertain another motion to approve, um, item E five, which is Haley Swisland and Maria Langraft as the junior high softball coaches.
Awesome.
I'll stay.
For a second.
Just a second.
Okay. It's been moved to the second tick to approve the hiring of Haley Swisland and Maria Langraft as the junior high softball coaches. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? With one, uh, motion carried with one extension. Okay. Moving along to item number nine. This is an information only item at this time. And it will be, um, a presentation by Mr. Sherwood, Mrs. Natt and Mrs. Anderson.
How about a long presentation?
You know, Matt, can I just, I want to give a brief overview before you start the presentation that as Mary Ann said, this is information only and the plan is this will come back next month. We want to give the community, all stakeholders, an opportunity to review this. It'll be posted to the, uh, website and, um, send any questions through to us, to myself or to Mr. Sherwood, um, which he can then share with the group and then we'll bring it back for the board to vote on at the October meeting. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sherwood.
So before I go through the information I have, I do want to thank all of the committee members that have joined, um, throughout the summer. So we met six different times from June through September. Um, our last meeting was last Wednesday. It was two hours every time, you know, summertime is busy. All these individuals have families and, and different things going on. So I was very appreciative of them taking the time to come and also when they create themselves throughout the meetings. There's definitely times where, you know, some of the topics that we discussed, you know, viewpoints vary. But every, every person that was there always created themselves in the highest regard, which I wouldn't think to be any different than our this whole school district constituents. So very appreciative, especially these two ladies here as well and Mr. Raver. You know, the individuals teaching that content, they provided great insight and expertise on those games. So kudos to them that did be a part of the human growth advisory committee. So I'm going to read through a little information and I'll go through what our process was in determining what this document looked like. Wisconsin statute states that school districts that offer human growth and development must have an advisory committee appointed by the school board and composed of parents, teachers, school administrators, pupils, healthcare professionals, members of the clergy and other residents of the school district to advise the school board on the design and implementation of the human growth and development curriculum and to review the curriculum. During the 2022, 2023 school year, we twice shared information with our district constituents on how they could sign up to be a part of the advisory committee. There's also specific recruitment of members in the district staff. The committee comprised 16 individuals, school staff, medical providers, community members and parents and guardians. As an advisory committee, we developed a vision, mission and working agreements to adhere to during our meetings. One of the most essential working agreements was the census decision-making model that we agreed upon. Again, the advisory committee's role is to advise the school board on the design and implementation of a medically accurate and age appropriate human growth and development curriculum. Through this process, we hope to facilitate communication between families, students and the school. So one of the big parts that we had done throughout this entire process was making sure that we're focused on transparency. So the statute does state that we have to show our curriculum to any of our family members who want to see it. And all the teachers were in agreement that that's something they're already doing. So if a family had, had any questions about what they are presenting throughout any of their classes, they've said that in the past, they've always shared these things because again, that's what best practice is. You know, our goal with this, because again, you know, some of these things can, can be a little bit taboo at times, is to make sure that our families understand that we're not trying to provide any information to them that they're not aware of. And again, if it's something that as a family you determine isn't what you want your child to be a part of, again, you always have that option to opt out. So the number one goal for us is open communication with families and being as honest with you as possible. Because again, we want our families to be a partner with us when it comes to all these topics and our education. Um, the next part that we had focused on was a framework for instruction. Um, so again, that is a part that I know any of this curriculum can seem daunting at times, regardless of how tenured you might be as an educator, because again, you want guidance from your building and your district. So our focus was to make sure that regardless of who is teaching this content, there is a framework in place. So if it's Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. Natt, Mr. Raver, or in a few years, maybe something looks different. There's a framework in place. So it looks the same for what the board approves. Um, again, I think this also takes maybe some of that anxiety away from our staff members going, oh, what's wrong? What is Mrs. Natt doing? What is Mr. Raver doing? What is Mrs. Anderson doing? Nope. This is how we are addressing any of these topics and this is how we are presenting that information to our students. So the next part was, you know, going through the topics that, um, as a committee, we felt needed to be covered. Um, so essentially we did go through topic by topic, um, and determine whether or not that was something that we should have, um, a senior in high school, a junior in high school, which grade level should see certain topics. Um, and as, again, we did vote on some of these topics because there were areas that we didn't necessarily disagree upon that should be taught, um, at a specific grade level. So again, we could vote and make the determination. Once we had that scope of sequence of a rough idea, what we felt like our human growth and development should look like, I did provide, um, kind of an outline for the group to look at in regards to specific objectives that were aligned with our national sexuality education standards. And some of those also were, I'll be honest, other districts in our area also used. So I provided some examples that some of our local districts had and also that Mrs. Natt had, um, also utilized in her previous role. So then as a, as a group, we weren't coming up with brand new objectives for each area, for each topic. Because again, I think that would then be very, very daunting if we had to do that for each specific one. And again, not that our committee members didn't have that capability, but again, that's not necessarily their, their forte either. You know, they were, um, bringing a different lens to that, that group. So again, we went through grade by grade, determined which ones we felt were essential and which ones maybe were duplicative and we didn't need, or maybe ones that we didn't feel were, again, age appropriate for, you know, our district. Because again, this is a sequence of information that is for our kids and our families, not for any of our neighbors. Which again, is a, a big part of, of what we had to do because of all 16 people, I don't think we had any of us with the exact same viewpoint, um, which, you know, standards you would pick. I think if we had all of us to our individual one, we'd have 16 different documents, which is okay. That's why we have a committee and that's why we go around different things. And that's why we're going to present the information for you to vote on in October. So again, we finished up last Wednesday. I apologize. I couldn't get it out a little bit sooner to you guys. I know that, uh, getting it out Friday probably was, was a little bit time, um, consuming. But, uh, again, I am very proud of the work that the committee did because again, I think this is a very important topic and one that is probably long overdue for our, our district, even though we did have a policy in place. You guys have any questions? Both the faculty and teacher?
Um, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Natt.
Okay. We know that, um, health education is taught at two different time periods. Um, it's ninth grade and seventh grade?
Ninth grade and eighth.
That, that's a change. Why don't you elaborate?
Okay. Uh, okay. Okay. My, my question is, how is, okay. I, I guess I'm thinking of health education as a class. Okay? How is the K through six scope and sequence incorporated into existing classes?
It's its own class.
So we now have health?
Yes. K eight.
Taught by you. Okay. I didn't know that.
Which, that was one thing the committee had discussed. So our board policy that was adopted in 2003, updated in 2005 and revised in 2016. It does state that we have a K 12 human growth and development curriculum.
Okay. So, so then how, like, do you go in once a week to all the classes to teach health or?
K through five, they come to me once a week for 30 minutes. And six through eight at the middle school. In general, um, it's a everyday class for a quarter and it's a rotational basis with, um, a couple of the other specials.
Right.
Um, the only difference this year is sixth grade health because of the switch in guidance from middle school to high school. Um, some of the courses for sixth grade that she had taught, she was no longer able to teach. So I absorbed that into health. So for sixth grade, it will be a semester. Um, and I will take the academic and career planning that, that, um, counseling did. And I will incorporate that into health.
Mrs. Natt, to clarify, the curriculum is not just human growth and development.
No, the human growth right now.
It's extensive, yeah.
A week, maybe?
We're, we're pretty happy with the changes that have taken place in the last year with what our, our kids are. I mean, some, some areas that focused on, you know, like hygiene, those types of things that are essential. Because we got to, it's a pretty comprehensive program now.
Okay. So thank you for that update. Then I guess my follow up question is, the health class at the high school is in ninth grade. So how are the, um, the objectives infused into curriculum and for the other students beyond ninth grade? Alyssa, can you address that at the high school?
Yep. And sophomore class that is required in their schedule, um, they take with me life and personal skills. And I include this three different units within the, um, handbook. So once you go to ninth through 12th grade, uh, we have a labeled what health curriculum in ninth grade is covered. Plus the human growth and development portions. That's kind of implied. And then, um, in life and personal skills where it says 10th grade, that's where I come into play.
Okay. How about, because we also have, um, standards for. Okay. Got it. It answers the question. Okay. Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. Any other questions from board members at this time?
I just want to make a comment that it was, as a parent participant on the committee, it was great to have the teachers there to really kind of give us a general idea of how things have been taking place and provide updates and share some confusion that they've had. And, uh, I believe that after this committee forum, they are much more comfortable now knowing what their standards are, what the guidelines are, where they will operate within and not go beyond without giving personal opinions and mostly definitions. It includes, I'll tell Mr. Sherwood, he was outstanding in his leadership efforts throughout this whole program and coordinating, um, very well put together. I just want to thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. So this will be posted on the district website and we welcome, um, community members, parents to weigh in on this. Um, we would like to facilitate that by asking people to send their comments or, you know, comments or questions, whatever, to Mr. Sherwood or to Mr. Natt. And they will collect them, collate them and share them with the board. And of course, um, you know, we as board members are always open to caring for parents also. But there is value in centralizing it.
I, I have another question. Because I heard there was a, there's an option if you don't want your child to have any of this because you just want to walk through with the processes for that from the way that.
You want to ask, Matt?
So what, how this usually happens is before the unit has been delivered, um, there will be like a notice that's sent home to parents that says, you know, at this time we're going to be doing human growth and development. It will list all of the standards that are going to be gone through. And then it is a, essentially a permission slip. If you do not wish your child to be a part of all or part of that, if you wish for them to be exempted, then you just sign that, bring it back to the teacher. And then during the time when the rest of the class would be, um, having those lessons, they would go to an alternate location, have an alternate assignment. they would go to an alternate location, have an alternate assignment and um they would join the class back after those lessons have been completed.
There was also discussion on providing curriculum to that family member, to that parent or guardian in case they wish to present it to their child on their own time in a form that they feel is appropriate.
So I've had um families ask to see the lessons. I usually just either email them or send them home in another fashion. In the past, most often, parents like, oh, that's great. I'm perfectly fine with that. Um, if a child is opted out, oftentimes I will then put a pack together of that information, um, send it home in a sealed envelope, let, let that parent know that it is coming in the backpack so that they can view that information and share it with their student however they desire. There's also a word in the handbook that states that we provide um instruction in that area and if they want to contact me and let me know too, that's an option.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much for all of your work on this project. Okay, on to agenda item number ten of our discussion action items. A, the gender restraint and seclusion report.
For Sherwood.
So each year, we have specific staff members who are trained in nonviolent crisis intervention with the focus on not the physical interventions. Our goal is always to intervene in a way that's going to de-escalate students. So seclusion and restraint are not the focal point. I am happy to say that last year, as a district, we had zero instance of seclusion or restraint for our regular education students or our special education students. That is the, the first time in my community that we've had zero instance of seclusion and restraint.
Well, congratulations to the teachers for, for absorbing all this information and being able to use it.
I want to actually comment at a time that this actually is increasing in our state. Um, I don't think you can underestimate how big of a deal it is that we just had a report that had zero. The trauma and what happens when this has to take place um is a big deal. And unfortunately, it's increasing in a lot of places. And so I just want to recognize how big of a deal this is and thank you for all of the work. Um, thank you all for all of the work that's being done because it's a big deal.
Okay. Good job. Our next item is the advanced learning report, Dr. Watson.
Oh, you have to approve this.
I'll make a motion to those teachers to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a motion second to, to approve the annual restraint and seclusion report? Alan, please say yes. I'll, I'll show Carrie. Okay, Dr. Watson, you are on with the advanced learning report.
We still live on you.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I'm Rod. So we are required to come for the board periodically and share what we do for advanced learning. That's a very good mandate that we should as a district. Don't explain what we do for our struggling learners as well as for our, our talented learners. And so what I have here is a presentation about what we have been doing and what we want to do next. Um, this second slide uh is the same as what you were sent, but this is basically the mission, the definition. Um, I try to avoid the terms gifted and talented because it seems like it's something to be stowed upon a young person that is just in their marrow and that is not true. Students develop themselves. If you ever talk to someone who you identify as gifted and talented, we find out that they've been given lots of opportunities and they've taken advantage of them. And they develop themselves and read lots and they do lots of things to help them to become the remarkable people that they are. Um, it wasn't just like woke up one day, I'm like, hey, I can do all these things. So um it's often the result of families that work really hard with them. Um, I think if, uh, you've all had children in the district, you have, you know how that works. So um we are very serious about this in our, in the high school. We believe that students, um, when they demonstrate aptitude, they get five areas of giftedness. That's still what the state uh conference uses. That's their term. Um, it's our duty to respond to them. We really have no excuse not to. We have a hundred and seventy-four students. We know their names. Um, if they are showing themselves to be really capable in any certain area, it's our job to see that and put additional challenges in front of them if that's what they want to do. Um, bigger schools could lose more kids. Of course, they have a lot more opportunities, but they may not know their kids' names. And so we do. Um, we respond to their needs. We need to engage. They hold their skills and meet their potential. And that's part of our mission statement as a district. So our goals are to support advanced learners through the offerings of differentiation, development, and general education program. I put that number one because you can um come up with all kinds of extra stuff. You do all day long and you're not challenging it in the classroom, then you're not really getting the beat of the whole problem, right? So our classes themselves have to be challenging enough and differentiated enough that the student knows the kid in the front row that already read a whole book about the Civil War needs a different kind of assignment than the rest of the classes on the Civil War is, right? And so that kind of training is something our staff needs and we're, we're working on. Um, because one lesson does not always fit all and making sure we're on the same page is not the same thing as making sure that we're all learning the same way. Uh, the second one is to support relationships between home and the school of, of what the state calls gifted and talented students, the advanced learners. Um, like I said earlier, they don't become advanced learners because of school effort alone, but often it's exactly what the families are doing. So reaching out to those families and making sure we bring them in. We work with them and find out what they want for the young people. Uh, we work very hard on that. I think some people in the room are aware of that and it's something we've got to be even better at because it's just so important. Um, the third one is ensure academic success of all advanced learner students. That may seem like a simple thing. Advanced learners are good age, right? But it's not always the case. Um, they often become very, very good at one thing if they're expensive at other things. They're often uh struggled with mental health because they spend a lot out of themselves at the point where it can be very stressful. There's a lot of literature on this. Um, so I'm guessing you folks know that too. So looking at the academic success and realizing that students in struggle at the schools, not always because they don't know the materials, sometimes there's other things going on. It could still be gifted learners. Um, and so ensuring that academic success is part of our mission. And then some of these resources, professional development for the community in regards to advanced learning. So we bring in parents, we bring in people for advanced learning, making sure that they know what kinds of opportunities exist out there and what we can do as a school to support them. These are goals of the program. I wouldn't say we're hitting all these goals yet. We're working very hard on it. Um, full disclosure, as a, as a department or as a committee on this, we've missed some momentum because the people we keep crafting into this committee are less experienced with turnover, right? And so for instance, it's headed by Mr. Sowick. So uh we're working on building that momentum with staff turnovers. That always happens. But uh we have a lot of good things going. This is what the state defines as advanced learning. I think it's a very good metric for looking at uh students because we are very used to looking at the second one probably as knowing, wow, that kid's a really good math student. Um, but we may not, for instance, see the fifth one very well. Who is that student who doesn't pay attention to math? That's a wow, can she create or can she do uh drama? Or they can be saying, you know, there's an area that they're very creative in that is a niche for them. That's still an area of advanced learning. Leadership is another one. We have lots of opportunities for leadership in our district. And we have, we have two students that are working on there right now. Um, and then uh visual formulas related to the fifth one. The first two are a little different. Um, like I would say, the first one is one that you, you often see, for instance, we're giving the valedictorian to. They're, they're good at all the things. And the second one is really specific and narrow in one area, like Saban's situation, but at the expense of others, is still very good at one specific area. So these are five areas. I mean, you have a way of capturing students' information to see if they're gifted in any of these areas. We collect that every year and we share it with the staff and encourage them to provide the opportunities for them to develop these skills. And then we work with parents. We try to figure out, is this something we want to keep work on number three? Or do you want to work on one, two, four, and five to assist three thirty restraint? That's a choice as soon as the parents need. I'll explain that in a minute. So I'm not going to get into all of these in depth. Uh, just know that this is how we see whether a student qualifies uh for an advanced learner program that is intense level of giftedness. Um, so intellectual ability, you know, the bullet points here, uh, is someone who's all around, very bright and very good at school. The specific academic areas, um, and this should happen in a lot of high schools. You should be seeing this where they become very good at one specific area. They put a ton of effort into like the science olympiad or some one thing that they're really passionate about. Um, and that can be of, at consequence for other things. Uh, but there's a lot of research suggests that that's a very good path for students as long as they don't complete the rest of the things. You come out of high school and really raise a sharp in one area and that gives them a career path. Creative conductive problem thinking is probably our weakest area when it comes to identifying um advanced learning because this doesn't always manifest in areas where we identify as gifted. Uh, but transferring those ideas, like the third one is really the point of school, right? We learn things about the Civil War, about the Théorie des Théories, so we can apply that to life. Um, and students who are very good at doing those things are identified as gifted rather than the state too. These students can be quite scattered though now and they're doing lots and lots of things. Artistic ability, music, musical and drama arts, um, or drama and visual arts. You saw evidence of that with one of our students earlier. Um, because that's the rare ability, create, perform, and describe, music, drama, and art. Um, and you know that as a school, we're working very hard on our, our drama and our choir programs, for instance. These are things we've been developing quite hard this last year. So um students that just demonstrate this ability, even if they're going to a very tiny school in the center of the state, should still have opportunities for expressing this, right? And there's some very impressive drama departments in the big schools around us and we can do great things too. And then leadership ability. Um, this is one that is very important to me as, as someone who tries to develop itself as a leader in the military, uh, making sure to build leadership opportunities in front of people. And then I'd encourage anybody who's listening to this to reflect on what kind of leader you were when you were fifteen. Um, it doesn't always look the same, right, as what we expect out of leaders. They're, they're not always leading from the front. They're often the white kid in the back that's cracking jokes, but they often have quite a remarkable set of leadership skills. Um, and you go to the bottom one. Uh, these are sometimes the kids in my office. Not always for good things, right? But they don't, they don't play by the rules all the time. And think of anybody, any leader in history who played by the rules, they probably didn't become very famous. Leaders don't do that. Usually they have a different path. So uh they take risks and then demonstrate, uh, understanding that and developing that while helping them build characters is really important in schools. And, okay, so um this is a good way to look at any problem in school when it comes to behavior, um, struggling students, uh, talented students, is that most things should be tier ones where eighty percent of the stuff happens. And so this is where um all students take a math class. All math teachers need to have a plan for their very advanced learners, right? All students take uh US history. They all take biology. Those teachers need to have interventions in class for the students that are during stand material before you even open chapter one, right? And that's very important. Our staff is very serious about that, but we do have work to do with that too. Because it is hard. It almost feels like sometimes you gotta make twenty-two different lessons in one class because your kids are starting at such different levels. The second one is where you have small groups of individuals. For instance, uh, you have a group of students in English that are very good at debating, very good at putting together an argument. And so we invite them very carefully into forensics where we do those things, right? So we put our students in front of them, the small groups of students, um, or we invite them on select field trips. Um, I forget, did anyone you go with Ms. Downs last year on her field trip? I think you did, Katie.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's the kind of thing where like, oh, the student teachers will put together select field trips for an interested group that has shown aptitude in something, will find grant funding usually. Um, and we've, we've done all kinds of things like that. Uh, so the students don't even know they've been identified. They usually have advanced learners, not to average cadence. Uh, they just know that they've said that something and invited to something. Um, and then I'm going to explain the reasons for them in a different slide. And then tier three, this is uh, this is very rare stuff. This is very common. Students are working several levels above grade level and this is where you're inviting them to do various specific things. Usually inviting their parents into ongoing conversations, saying this student's ready for college with their high school sophomore. Um, so what opportunities can we do for them right now? Um, so we do have two students on advanced learning IAP right now, so an individualized learning plan for advanced learning. Um, we need more. It's just that the, the time is more than we thought and putting that together and doing it right. Um, but we found that the conversations are extremely important, having those parents come in um and talk about the, the young people and figure out how to find that balance between putting up students in front of students without stressing them out. Because you still gotta do all the stuff that the kids do too and it's still gotta be young people. You know, I don't want to speak quickly. If you guys can jump in anytime you want, something uh comes up. Okay, how to identify students that are gifted, that are talented or that are advanced learners? This is really important. This is where schools have gotten this wrong a lot. You don't want to identify them, for instance, in seventh grade and say thou art gifted and make them be gifted and just say that you're taking this gifted path for the next five years. The rest of you guys go this way and be like average. You cannot and should not ever do that, right? Because students in seventh grade have blossomed at different time periods. They sometimes show aptitude and then regress. Um, they, the young people are going to blossom at different points as long as there are young people in the world. So what we do is we identify them periodically and consistently and we re-identify and we make sure that we look for hidden traits in them that may not show. Um, so there's a lot of ways. We should, we often see through just some of the data uh that some students are consistently above grade level in those specific academic areas. That's all that's ever going to show. The, the board exam's not going to show leadership or creativity. Uh, but it will show students that are doing math at a college level and their English. Um, student parent reports, we're going to see the other things. This is where students come and say, I'm bored. Is there more that I can do? You'd be surprised how often they do say that. Like, yes, yes, there is. Or a parent report saying, I would like to see some more challenge for my kiddo. Um, and then we also have um advanced learner team meetings. This is with uh Mrs. Madden, Mrs. Peterson, and myself. We had Mr. Stewart on there before. We had Mr. Bertino, Mr. Sowick. We've had everybody on there. That's where we meet and say, what? Have you gathered, what have you seen from students in these five areas that, that we need to do special things for? And then you don't even click on it, but all this is, is a form for staff. It's in a weekly communication to report that to me saying this young, like you say, the art teacher. I will never know if she's artistically talented. I'm just not in there enough to know that because she does. So she reports that to me and then when the Senate gives us a, a special program that they do sometimes or other opportunities show up, I'm like, hey, let's, let's call this kid and give that to her. So these are ways that we identify them. Just know that we, we, we have them lots of ways. It can't be as simple as looking at test scores and saying, you're a great mathematician.
Dr. Watson?
Yeah.
Is the form only for employees to develop?
It is.
I mean, could someone else in the community also share or is it just?
It's an internal document. It's just for staff. But if anybody in the community recognized someone who needs more challenge, I'm hoping for that conversation. Especially with, you know, parents do say that to me sometimes. You don't hear it much from teenagers, to be honest, like, can I please do more stuff? Um, but what they do need is they belt it out to someone. They're ready for that, right? And so I'm kind of speaking as a kid that was, I was close to high school, you know? Like I, I did it on soul, but I, I, there's more stuff out there to do when you're young. It's, and I need that adult to say it. Conference coming up, I'll send you.
Well, I liked the form from the perspective that if a parent did want to share, it gives some structure for them to answer questions in a way of, um, you know, because I think as a parent, you also want to push your child, like, I mean, you know, so I, 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 I felt like the form was a really good structure that would also help.
Yeah.
Um, so I just didn't know if it was.
Let me, Julie, let me reflect on that a little bit because I, I don't, I don't necessarily want to send parents more forms, but I do, I do want to respond if a parent, and I will, I absolutely already do that when a parent reached out and says, is there anything more that my kid can do? I think we're not reaching for the show. Uh, but then maybe that form on my screen at least helped me to bring that conversation. Uh, but our schools fall in love. I don't really need to send a form to parents because I can just talk to them. But I do need to make sure I'm asking them the questions and be that honest.
It was a really great structure.
Yeah, I know, but, okay, I can't do that. Um, okay, so uh PPT is a, are really our flex period that ends at pride time. We have that between the first and second block in our school. Um, and if we didn't have, we had to build it. All of us schools have something like this. That's where we meet with students that are below grade level in math and reading and make sure we help them out because that's what big school does. It's also where we put in enrichments. And so right now we have enrichment going with Mrs. Anderson. Uh, she'll leave, but if she were here, she could explain the one she's doing right now. I believe she's planning a special foraging in the forest with her enrichment for students who are really interested in foraging. Um, Mr. Reber's doing football for people that just really like sports. And so sometimes there's advanced learning enrichments, like we're going to investigate through their fusion later this year. And sometimes they're really, uh, I have friends since I teach a couple in the war in Ukraine uh because I'm really interested in current events. We play the news. We look into the news because I just find my students don't hear the news. And so we find like, what news source you get, we go check them out. We go up there and we, we try to learn about the actual, like, what's happening on the ground in Ukraine. Um, so these are specific to different areas and the students have a way of sharing with us what they're interested in. We talked about that last year. Um, I think forensics, like, forensics, like uh CSI, I had forensics was something I wanted to learn more about. I don't know who's going to teach that. Uh, but very robotics is something I'll learn more about. So when there's something like that, we'll investigate it through a two to four period enrichment. They have them train PPT, but our rule is no homework. They got to know that. In the class, we learn lots and we, we like spark an interest. They go keep learning. It'd be like, hey, you can go on like a U two funnel anytime we do this sometimes. So uh, but they don't have to, uh, I don't want any more homework. So that's, that's what we do during PPT all year. All teachers have two enrichments running at any given time and they are two enriching the learning we already offer in our school. Okay, most important, I'm going to go through these so you understand these. These are the ones that really stand out as what we do. I'll try to explain the best I can and then uh this is the end of my presentation. So I put this at the top because if you can't say enough, if you can take college classes at our school, you can do that at any school in the state. Uh, our numbers for this are, as a percentage of our student body are extraordinary. Um, what is, you're doing one right now, right?
I'm doing two.
You're doing two. I forgot. Okay, which two are you doing?
I'm doing uh college physics and I'm doing uh NRES, some numbers, but it's like uh human biosphere. It's just gen, gen N, so.
So Brad could coast through his senior year. I'm sorry, but I'm going to spot, but like, would, it is a culture. I would, I would say it's probably fair to say it was a culture I took over, that the senior year was the co-senior. Um, it can't be true. You can't build momentum for your first year of college if that's where you're going by not doing much your senior year. I'm not saying every class is going to be a college class. There's probably awakening class and there are other things you want to do that are fun too. Uh, but our college courses, when our students take them, they get aged. They do very well compared to other students, other college students. Um, and I think I probably shared something before, one of the. One of the soldiers in my unit had 27 college credits before he ever started college. Because my school did these kinds of classes plus AP as your freshman year. That's thousands of dollars. So those classes are very popular. Students can request them twice a year. Then he goes to the boss for approval and you guys see the report on those. And that is a wonderful thing that we work on. Deal credit courses are the, some of those rigorous courses we offer. This is like the buildings and trades classes, the composition classes, classes that are, their syllabi are the same as what's taught at midstate. And they have to be approved by midstate, right? So it's same level rigor. Our students still get A's in them, right? So our teachers are teaching the same level rigor here and they're doing a very good job. And you saw it, because I ended this in spring, our deal credit numbers through the roof. I can't remember that. They came out of, something out of COVID, the deal credit program just took off. So it's a wonderful thing we offer. We try very hard to offer AP. It's a little more challenging for the kids because it's all on that one test. And so that we have lots of AP offerings. So we offer two new classes this year for advanced placement. We have ideas for the future too. The fourth one, I haven't shared much with the board. When we did the old style board reports, I put it in a few times, but I don't think I shared it much. The classes where it's most clear that sometimes students walk in this door on the first day and already pass it are like English classes. Because you take English every year up through your 10th grade year. And then you might take it 11th and 12th due to many of what classes you have. So there, it is common for students to take ninth grade English. And if they took the final exam on the first day of class, they might go past it. So what we do is we allow students to test out of ninth or 10th grade if they show aptitude. They have to do the same final projects that the students have to do. And if they are proficient, then we don't make them take that class anymore. The goal is that I don't want these AP classes only to have like five or six kids in them. And that is sometimes the case. So because I tend to get the senior year and their freshman and sophomore year full these classes, they didn't necessarily need. Their senior year, they're doing internships, they're doing their building and trades classes and other things. They aren't real great people. So if I can clear that stuff out of their schedule that they didn't need in the first place, then they get an advanced classes that will challenge them. And we know the challenge is a lot like COVID, right? Can't be too much, can't be too little. It's got to be just right for it to be interesting. So we do let students test out of English nine and English 10. And now we're playing, we're working with the algebra piece. And you were going to help with that, right? The freshman? Okay, so this I can't take credit for. The math teacher worked on this with Mrs. Friday. But testing out of algebra has to start in eighth grade. We already presented that thing, so pretty familiar with that. But that was a little different because you're not taking the same subject. Eighth grade math is not always algebra. So you have to teach extra things to them and get them ready. So this year, just remind the board, the students who show a lot of aptitude in eighth grade math are coming actually to the high school to take the class from Mrs. Downs in the spring. So they're taking high school algebra. When they get that done, if they do a good job, then they can start in high school with geometry. And now they could be on an AP calc track, right? So if we free up those early classes, they can start taking classes at the 3rd and 4th point. Any questions on the testing up? I work with my peers in other schools and they, they're pretty impressed by this. It's just, it's a lot of paperwork. You really have to build a trail for it. You have to make sure that you have a pretty solid final exam in those classes. Because what you don't want to do is, say, a kid tests out of English nine, you get an English 10, they're swamped. Like, now I'm way behind. That's a terrible thing to do to young person. You want to send them there if this is a class that's a right challenge for them. Okay, the extracurriculars, I don't want you to think that that is a small thing. This is enormous. Like, if you are really into science, thank goodness we have a science Olympia. If you are really into art, in art club, you can make art all day long. Our friends with group, National Art Society, challenges kids go to a whole other level. We're revamping the drama program. We're in Mr. Resurrection and Mr. Flores got some good things going. People are into history, have a club for themselves, Quiz Bowl. And that's just some of them. Those extracurriculars give students that niche to pursue, which hopefully they're being sparked in class too, but that's next one. The advanced learner IEPs, we bring in students and look at all the options they have for them. Once we notice that the student is above grade level and work with their parents, we set follow-on meetings after the next challenge. And we come up with something you need each time. Like, you want work on leadership? Plan a field trip. Figure out who's going to go, where you're going to go, what are you going to learn, how are you going to pay for it? And so the advanced learner plan is something we do in conjunction with parents and we periodically review it. As I admitted to the board though, it's really hard to find the time to get the team together and do these because more students need them than we're currently able to produce. This is something we got to get better at. We currently have two robust ones going. I already covered enrichments, leadership opportunities, Badger State. You guys both did that last year, right? That's one of our best ones. Leadership Wood County, we're sending our fellows up on that. I think next week that starts. So putting those leadership opportunities, because leadership is developed, not inherited. And then the last one is creative scheduling. So you heard about Kaylee earlier, right? Kaylee is going to go to Marshfield High School to take a drama class next year. So we work with Marshfield. We don't have a big drama program here, right? We don't even have a drama class, to be honest. And so they do. And so we decided to work with them and figure out what kind of, what kind of scheduling we can figure out and we can do almost anything. So we're willing to help some very creative schedules. I won't get into the details, but we have helped with some really bumpy schedules to work into that block to get kids into all the classes they want to take. I got one girl that's taking basically two grades of math in one semester right now. Just by the way, we're going to leave things apart. And Mrs. Peterson does good work. So our school's small enough, we should be able to do all those things, right? And then the important thing is that we're doing them in the interest of the students, not test scores, not make ourselves feel good. It's what the kids want to do and what their parents want to support. We're getting better at it. So I can't answer any questions yet, but I'm sliding away a little.
So you mentioned that a lot of this could start back to like the eighth grade year. You see kind of monitoring even some of these elementary students. I'm certain that maybe from time to time, there's maybe a fourth, fifth, or sixth grader that just kind of start sparking the developmental stages in the child's life is different based on the child. So do we, do you periodically come across a younger individual in an elementary school that just happens to stand out in some of these aspects? And do we have something in place to maybe help push them forward a little bit?
Yeah, I think the next slide is the elementary, I can share some opportunities.
Oh, you skipped that one, that's fine.
Especially in the classrooms, you know, for example, teachers differentiate a lot. So like for in ELE, they'll read different books that have different discussion questions trying to get them to think deeper. So that kind of is in the classroom. We have the intervention enrichment time, just like the high school. And then what I did is just try to list different things that we do. So in the primary grades, the focus is guided reading groups and different reading for that. A lot of times when kids are a high level reader at the younger grades, they need writing practice. So, you know, not just reading harder books, but getting their writing skills developed. So that's what teachers do there. And then we have, we have opportunities that a lot of them aren't choice. So the battle of books, for example, is a choice that kids can do. And the geography, this has sort of started that last year. And the math league, Mrs. Kivitz, where the kids have to take a quiz and then the teams are chosen from there. The hardest math problems through Spolastic, Mr. Klein started that as the interventionist. Mrs. Neefeld, for example, is doing an optional 40-book challenge with grade six, seven, eight. Primary teachers use book math boxes to make sure kids have activities at their level that they're focusing on. So Mr. Klein is coordinating a 21st century grant, which is going to provide some foreign after-school opportunities. This summer, we sent a group of 10 students to the Marshfield campus for a STEAM opportunity. And then Brad talked about the eighth grade algebra. So there's definitely things that we do at the elementary school to, you know, kind of spark that interest and start that.
Any other questions on what we're doing? If anything occurs to you, if you want to send a follow-up email or anything to me. Understand a lot of this, we're doing all this, but it doesn't mean we're doing it all good well yet. And so we're working on it. It's very important to us and so I welcome the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to approve the advanced learning report as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the PGS advanced learning report as presented.
Is there a second? It's been moved in. Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the advanced learning report as presented. I'll make a motion, say aye. Motion carried. Item C, contract to denim for language for the hard to fill positions.
So the changes that were requested at the last meeting regarding the compensation taking place after the completion of the course, we updated the language, which is in yellow, and then also added a form, the post-credit form that they would submit.
Any questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for language for hard to fill positions.
Is there a second?
No, second to motion.
Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract language, contract to denim language for hard to fill positions. I'll make a paper, say aye. I oppose. Motion carried. Item D, the second reading and approval of updates to policy 110, the school district admission.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 110.
Do you say a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item D to accept the second reading and approve the updates to policy 110. I'll make a paper, say aye. Oppose. Motion carried. Legislature report. Okay, the legislature kind of takes off in the summer and now they're back taking trouble. It's not all trouble. Some of it's quite good. First of all, over the summer, Speaker Boss in the Assembly established two task forces, two of which touch on school-related issues. One is a task force on childhood obesity. And we do have, not one of our legislators, but a close by legislator, Representative Rosa, who's from Marshfield in Clark County. She is on that task force. There's also a task force on truancy. And there are two representatives in our neighborhood. Crew from the Wisconsin Rapids area and Snyder from Opelika, the Wasa area, that is on that task force. So if anyone would like more information about that, I can forward more information from the legislative side. But, you know, we do have relatively local. And so we have many things to contribute to some opportunity.
I believe, did Ron Klein attend the truancy task force today? With the Wood County truancy task force meeting was today and we have representatives there.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Well, hopefully the Wood County group will be communicating with representative group. That sounds good. There also are several bills that have been introduced recently. It's an interesting collection of things. It's in the WASB report, page 20, actually WSB magazine, page 29. There's some of them that really are just policy changes. And there are some that could be classified as unfunded mandates. For example, one of them is requiring an automatic external defibrillator at youth athletic events. You know, I think we do that, right?
Yeah, and I believe there was the anti-choking one was in that update as well, which Gina, Gina is ahead of the curve, Gina Martenovich, actually brought those. And we have, how many anti-choking devices in the district now? One in the high school cafeteria, one in the elementary cafeteria, one in the PCC, C center. And then the defibrillators were all updated through Dan and Gina last year in the locations. So we're ahead of the game a little bit.
Once again, Pittsville leads the way.
Gina, who goes to Gina on that?
No one has to mandate that to us. There's some other things there related to the school funding formula. Also recently, this is not in the, in the magazine, but there is a bill that was introduced that would return school start date to local control. Not no longer mandating a September 1st start date, but let individual school boards make that decision. There's also, again, something related to funding. Right now in state law, there is a provision that says that the school district has a failed referendum. For three years, they cannot take advantage of the low revenue ceiling restrictions. It's kind of a technical thing, but it, to me, makes sense that, that they would change this. So we'll have to keep an eye on that. I think that one's going to be extremely partisan. And then, last but not least, DPI has announced that they are embarking on a strategic planning process. And they're opening things up for parents, students, families, school board members, administrators to comment, to offer their comments, their strategic planning process. One of the things that I personally have pondered commenting on is the fact that rural districts, particularly low enrollment rural districts, have different needs than urban districts. And sometime things need to be altered to meet the needs of those smaller rural districts. So I may be putting one, two cents in as a person, not as a school board member. But I would happen to share with Jason the website for that, if you think that. Or if people would like to learn more about that DPS strategic planning process. Okay.
And then I will, in regards to act 20, I don't really have an update right now. That's the science of reading, the literacy component. We're setting ourselves up in a good position right now with a lot of the things we're doing through our process right now. Our checking boxes where we are covering our bases regardless. So I don't envision anything being earth-shattering come January that we're not already covering or doing here. So we're going through a lot of good practice that would involve a lot in our strategic planning process and our goal setting, so.
One of the good things about that though, is that there may be funds allocated to the school districts.
I would, they're committing 50% funding. 100% would be nice, but 50% for programs that are approved. Yep, good point.
Right, so I'll go to keep our eyes peeled on that.
I have another question with something I got in my head as well.
Yeah.
The only comment I had because it was supposed to be in the growth development committee. So did I get a committee forum with those rules that they have that could be a law or not?
No, because it maps out pretty much current status.
So for Wood pass, would there be changes in anything? When there's certain things about who would kind of, you know. I think the best, I mean, it's not a law, no.
The rest of them.
They actually also had different stipulations that way. And that was what took us from December until the spring. And now we have to start already, based on the information we got from CISA, they had said.
You've got your agenda just.
Move forward with the things again.
That's what I think needs to change again. Pull this back a little.
No, no, this is not going to pass before October, before our next school board meeting. No way. Any questions or comments? Okay, oh. I just saw the WERSA meeting. If anyone want, could you send out information to board members again?
I actually don't remember which board member asked about that tonight. So we are, we're going to be presenting for two WERSA sessions. One with.
WERSA is the Wisconsin Rural Schools Alliance.
So I will send those dates. I think was asking about that. I'll send out more information to the board about the specific times of both of those presentations and that have come in chess. Monday and Tuesday in.
It's, no, it's near the end of, it's near the end of October.
Yeah, I'll send out more information to the board with the times of those presentations.
I plan to go for Monday, but not staying for Tuesday.
Okay. And Tuesday is not all day. They're done by noon. Eighteen months.
It's in the dumps.
It's in the dumps, yeah. Yeah, very good conference and very good networking. So.
When you say the end, you mean the 31st or the 32nd?
No, it's the 34th, last week.
It is, yeah, it is the 23rd and 24th. So.
I'm going to put two little plugs in. I know this may be a violation for homecoming plugs, but I need to get this out there. Looking for convertibles for the court. Um, looking for convertibles for the court parade. Uh, so this goes out to the community and then the, uh, recommendations for the community for Brandon Marshall. So I put that in my communication. I already have five people reach out to me with some suggestions. So we appreciate that feedback, with it only being three weeks away here.
Okay. Then, um, any public comments?
Give me a second, just to get a proper comment.
You don't have to register. Okay, then, to the item thirteen, um, motion to adjourn. We moved and seconded to adjourn meeting, I'll give them, I oppose. Motion carried. Yes, I have the comments.
Sit up.
Right, really, Mr. Sanders, I sure like.
Yeah, I don't believe it's.
Do you get it?